Father and amen is Jesus Lord we come thank you once again for your benevolence and father we just say for this our way and we have come to God, Father be with us on tonight, God our thoughts and our hearts and our minds. Keep us our minds on, stay on you and on peace, Father we just thank you in Christ Jesus name we pray, amen.
Amen.
A pleasure to be here to declare on the United States of America and to a republik for forty seconds. One nation under God, universal, with every team.
Thank you.
There's a list if anyone wanted to speak before the body round if you sound like that.
Oh, he, he, he gonna be. What's up, good boy?
Mary Garrett, present.
Present.
Mary Garrett, Carrie Adams. Councilor Sandra Van Zepen. Councilor Willa Maryruth, present. Councilor Van Zepen.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, approval of our agenda, Chair Secretary of Transit, the company motions and all the business keep us in eye, all opposed, may motion carry. Alright, item number five, approval of October being that amount of seventy-nine thousand three hundred five dollars and seventeen cents.
May I want to add something to the, um, talking about this couple months ago about we weren't raising our, we used to want tickets for thirty-two families or one hundred houses.
Mm-hmm.
And then the motion and the agenda.
Okay, this is on the bills list, we're not on the agenda. So, we should have modified the agenda, the right agenda.
Come on, I need, I need to make a modification.
Okay.
Go back to I, uh, to get.
Alright. We got motion. Okay, we got a second. Alright.
So, we need, um, motion is your, please modification, do we move?
Yes, that's what we're doing.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. All the favor indicate by saying aye, all opposed, may motion carry.
Now, I understand.
Item considered, from what, Dr. Adams?
It's to, uh, when people come in to purchase a license to, to work on their house, it always costs that fee for one hundred bucks, you know?
To change our business license and fee issuing to, to, from what, to what?
The minimum should be, I'm sorry, I can't remember that one.
Good afternoon.
Uh, the minimum fee should be, uh, we want to move it up from, we're charging one, one point five for whatever the cost of the job, but of course, you know, we never get the accurate cost of the job.
Okay.
So, the minimum fee should be one fifty.
Okay.
And then, like, if we do one point five and it's more than one fifty, then that's good. But if it's not, then the minimum is one, one.
Minimum issued fee is one fifty dollars.
Yes, sir.
But you're building it all ready.
No, we haven't, we haven't, we talked about it, but we never, uh, came up with the, said, yeah, we gonna do that.
It's actually not the business license, the business license is two fourteen.
Right, it's the building.
It's a built, building.
Building permit.
You're building permit.
Yes, yes, sir, building permit, yes, sir. And see, it's one point five times the cost of the job.
What if we had to, you have to modify from then to August, let me create that order.
Okay.
That's a, that's a permanent operation.
Gotcha.
So, you meet your like, put the line, and then it can be ordered off at that point.
Okay, gotcha, yeah, we talked about it, but we never.
Yeah, yeah, we were discussing, that's how, that's how we.
Okay.
So, is this time, or not?
It's two, two, three, two, I don't know. I have to draft the right for order. And then I already have you, you got, for a proof.
Okay.
Kind of have that done.
So, Chair Secretary of Transit, take it.
So, uh, second.
You brought the motion, second, all the favor indicate by saying aye, all opposed, may motion carry. Alright, let's get back to the bills, alright, approval of bills, list number one, an amount of seventy-nine dollars, three hundred five dollars and seventeen cents. Okay, we got a motion, is there a second?
I don't mind it.
Okay. We are electrical company, dynamic language, uh, Moses, they don't know what they do.
Remember the, uh, poles that we had, our alliance over at the gym, around the park?
Right.
Our alliance was on those poles, I mean, we have Alabama power on us, we have those giant hand lights off the pole.
Right.
And we didn't have a tall enough bucket truck to get up to it.
Okay.
So, we got him to come out and do that, and he also did some work out there at the. And also was it the, uh, there's not the senior citizen building, I believe.
Yes.
So, there's two or three different places in the building.
Okay, thank you.
So, the plumbing, electric, gas, ice.
It's what name, I want to say, none of the electric, it's a separate company from.
The one that handles the building.
The one with the gas.
They do, they do several different things, plumbing, electric, gas.
So, we got a motion, I said.
Okay, we got a motion, and a second, Mayor Brother, any questions? Haven't heard none, all in favor indicate by saying aye, all opposed, may motion carry. Alright, next item on the agenda, approval permit us from my last word, let's get into meeting.
I'll move it.
Alright, we got a motion, and a second, all in favor, any question? Okay, all in favor indicate by saying aye, all opposed, may motion carry. Item number seven, travel resolution two oh two five dot one zero dot zero one, a resolution of the City of Midfield, Alabama to approve an advanced travel request for Mayor Pro Tim Carrie Adams for nine hundred and nine dollars and eighty-nine cents to attend a regional orientation training and graduation in Montgomery, Alabama from October twenty-eighth through the thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five.
So, I'm standing.
Proper motion and second, and I'm sure, same, right, Adams, alright, with an extension by Adams. All in favor indicate by saying aye, all opposed, may motion carry. Alright, item number eight, travel resolution two oh two five dot one zero dot zero two, a resolution of the City of Midfield, Alabama to approve an advanced travel request for Councilor Willa Johnson for one thousand one hundred eight dollars and thirty-one cents to attend the regional orientation training and graduation in Montgomery, Alabama from October twenty-eighth through the thirtieth.
Move second.
And, and it's, we got a motion and a second, we got an extension from Council Johnson.
Yes.
Alright, thank you, alright, that been said, all in favor indicate by saying aye, all opposed, may motion carry. Item number nine, travel resolution two oh two five dot one zero dot zero three, a resolution of the City of Midfield, Alabama to approve an advanced travel request for Councilor Janice Anderson for eight hundred sixty-seven dollars and eighty-seven cents to attend the regional orientation training and graduation in Montgomery from October twenty-ninth through the thirtieth. That been motion to approve. Alright, we got an extension from Anderson, alright, all in favor indicate by saying aye, all opposed, may, alright, motion carry, yes.
I'm going to make a call.
Sure.
I mean, the idea of the graduation, you know, if you can allow such a plan, okay, you keep it there, it's so important on the day.
The day before, okay, so, the, the nine.
Okay, so her funeral amount will be the eight, eight sixty-seven, eighty-seven.
Eight sixty-seven, eighty-seven. Alright, item number ten, travel resolution two oh two five dot one zero dot zero four, resolution of the City of Midfield, Alabama to approve an advanced travel request for Councilor Willa Maryruth for eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars and eighty-seven cents to attend the graduation in Montgomery, Alabama, October twenty-ninth through the thirtieth.
So, move second, understanding.
Alright, with an extension from Maryruth, alright, we got a motion, and a second, all in favor indicate by saying aye, all opposed, may motion carry. Item number eleven, travel resolution two oh two five dot one zero dot zero five, resolution of the City of Midfield, Alabama to, uh, approve an advanced travel request for Councilor-elect Reginald Wilson for nine hundred and nine dollars and eighty-nine cents to attend the regional orientation training and graduation in Montgomery, Alabama from October twenty-eighth through the thirtieth. Chair Secretary of Motion to approve.
So, move.
Alright, proper motion and second, all in favor indicate by saying aye, all opposed, may motion carry. Item number twelve, resolution two oh two five dot one zero dot zero six, a resolution of the City of Midfield, Alabama to approve an advanced travel request for Councilor-elect Leontae Jones for nine hundred and nine dollars and eighty-nine cents to attend the regional orientation training and graduation in Montgomery, Alabama October twenty-eighth through the thirtieth.
So, move second.
Alright, then properly motion and second, all in favor indicate by saying aye, all opposed. She not here? Okay, alright, so.
Correct, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
At the very top of all these resolutions, if you'll see the word in City of Midfield resolution, I'm going to play it, play it too, that's oh five, that's twenty-one. So, that needs to be straight because of the resolution, like there, you got twenty-one on all of them, very tough, it's your resolution.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I got it, just a clarification, okay. Okay, okay. Alright, item number thirteen, approval of business license for bedroom five lounge located five eighty-eight thousand superhighway, that's table.
Um, yes, because they said, they called before the meeting and said that they were not going to be able to hear thirteen and fourteen, but they supposed to have given Moses a call to, um, give him a recommendation.
Jasmine, but I did not receive a call from, uh, the lounge, uh, which is five eighty-eight best my superhighway, I haven't heard it yet. So, I talked to Jasmine, I told her that the party to myself, we need to do like a walk to, to see what the facility looks like. And also the same with book five eighty-eight, I haven't been out there to see what they're, probably doing.
So, Chair Secretary of Motion to table, item thirteen and fourteen. Alright, all in favor indicate by, about motion and second, all in favor indicate by saying aye, all opposed, may motion carry. Alright, item number fifteen, resolution two oh two five dot one zero dot zero seven, a resolution of the City of Midfield, Alabama to continue municipal operations. Well, the resolution is just, you continue to operate, uh, as you have on the previous budget, on your old budget, uh, I am not introducing a, a budget to the council two weeks I'm out here, so I don't think it would be right for me to try to establish a spending plan for rest of y'all remaining body, but with you, so it's going to be up to y'all to come up with your own budget, your own spending plan. So, this continuing resolution allows the city to continue to operate. And I will read it out loud. There, you got it.
Thank you.
Ten, five, alright. Resolution to continue municipal operation, whereas the fiscal year for the City of Midfield, Alabama begins on October first, two thousand twenty-five, whereas the city has not yet adopted a formal budget for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-five to two thousand twenty-six, and where it is necessary to organize continued municipal operation expenditure with an obligation to ensure uninterrupted public services and lawful financial management. Resolution, now, therefore being resolved by the City Council of the City of Midfield, Alabama, one, continuing appropriation, the appropriation as spreader to an obligation authorized by the prior fiscal year budget shall remain in effect. The city departments and offices or directors continue municipal operation under the terms and allegations established for the previous fiscal year unto a formal budget for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six being adopted. Two, limitation and adjustment, all spending and commitments shall be limited to those authorized under the prior fiscal year budget. Any necessary adjustment or modification to appropriation must be approved from the city council before implementation. Authority to administer, the mayor and city council, clerics, clerks, or empower to administer financial operation to make payments, fulfill contractual obligation in accordance with the continued operation and continued appropriation subject to established limitation and oversight by the city council. Duration, this resolution shall remain in effect until the city council formally adopt a new budget for the fiscal two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six, or further action is taken by the council. Effective date, this resolution is effective upon its adoption, adopted, the thirteenth day of October, two thousand and twenty-five.
So, move.
So.
Get proper motion and second, alright, any questions? Haven't heard none, all in favor indicate by saying aye, all opposed, may motion carry. Ready. Alright, report from the mayor, we got, uh, Chief Davis Upson, by the apartment, yes, sir.
Good evening, officer.
Good evening.
Um, I'd like to introduce our new employee on stand-up service, Thomas Sims, he's a resident of this great city, Midfield, he come over in the city. Born and raised here, went to the high school, he's also the son of Mr. Nathan, and this week, uh, week.
There, he won't hold it against you, but.
He works, he works full-time at Jefferson Fire Department, he's been employed there for a year, he'll be employed here part-time, so, support his effort. Also, uh, on last week, uh, uh, public, public, uh, fire safety week, October fifth through eleventh, we visited the community during several fire safety talks and things of that nature. We also have a big public safety safety plan in joint with our police department, uh, when we talk about crime prevention and fire safety, so that's my move.
Alright, any questions for Chief Davis? Alright, Detective Cleveland, up with Chief Bell.
Uh, good evening, everybody, appreciate y'all coming out today. We did a hiring list, uh, on the twenty-fifth at the Crossplex, uh, we got a pretty good turnout. Um, from that turnout, we do have one young lady come in for an interview next Monday to be a police officer. Uh, we also have a certified police officer, that's a young woman coming in this Wednesday. And if she's hired, she would be able to start a daily on the road. We're starting the neighborhood watch program, there are some signs back there, please take some and hang them as you see fit in the neighborhoods. We are working some pretty serious cases, we've had some, several shootings in the past two weeks. Uh, we do have suspects in that case, and we're breaking the board. Um, also, we had incident with the Board of Education, an employee embezzled a lot of money. Um, I have issued felony warrants, and we plan to take them custody this week. Any questions?
Something about incident at the Board of Education, well, am I hearing bad or something, and I don't hear it?
Yes, sir.
So, something happened?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah.
Yes, a former employee, that's a young one employee about the city, uh, over the course of the past year, a lot of money was taken.
Oh, okay, okay.
felony warrants haven't issued, we just haven't had the time to pay the.
Got you, okay. Any questions for?
We also participated in the Project Guardian suite, um, that was a county-wide operation with Jefferson County, Birmingham PD, US Marshals, FBI, and several other local municipalities. Um, just in Midfield alone, we stopped two hundred seventy-two vehicles, thirty-one traffic citations, sixteen warnings, and about thirty arrests, I've been talking about operation. So, we plan to do that operation county-wide, like, at least once a year going forward, just to show the presence, the child be out there more. We have jaws that recently opened, uh, the past week, we've been caught out there several times, nothing major, just trespassing, intoxicating people, that kind of thing. So, we're upping our patrols in the new businesses and, and every place, just obviously, you know, that's going to be.
Any questions for, second, please.
Thank you.
Uh, he wasn't still, well, he wasn't able to.
I'm sorry.
From the last time to now, uh, we've had eighteen inspections, we had three stop work orders, uh, we sold seven building permits, uh, six electrical permits, two plumbing and one mechanical. And also, we went out and we, on Eighth Street, and we served a notice of violation to two locations over there for cars, uh, one is running a junkyard, the other one is doing mechanical work. Uh, the one that was doing the mechanical work on Eighth Street, uh, they moved most of their cars out already. So, they, we had officers that went by and tagged those cars, and they're moving them out. And, you know, I went by there this afternoon, and it's only like, look, could be about two more cars in the yard. Uh, but the one that has the, the, uh, junkyard in the back, back there, I guess, uh, there are several vehicles still there. But, uh, David, if we could, is there a way that we could change that notice of violation we have shown there fifteen days? Once we issue that, is there a way that we could shorten those days down? Is that possible?
Because the staff's right now, the audience, the, the member audience to do that.
Oh, okay, okay.
But also send an email about that, as well as the, uh, changing the building permit.
Okay.
Minimum and maximum, just email, no matter what section that's going to be in.
Okay.
We'll see.
You got a plan, we'll come by the permit section.
Yes, sir. We'll do that tomorrow. Also, uh, uh, with the, uh, I ran into an issue today, and also we probably need to address that as far as, uh, buildings are concerned, uh, I'm having battery smoke detectors. The issue with that is, if you just have battery smoke detector, they're only going to go off where the smoke is. It won't alarm the rest of the house, because they are not linked together. So, the requirement that I would like to see the city, and I mean, we, we, I won't propose that, is that we have hardwired smoke detectors, or at least the ones that are wireless, like the ones we have here in the city hall, where they are linked together, so if there's a sm- smoke in the house, it will set off all the alarms in the house, the smoke detectors in the house. But the way, if we just have battery operated smoke detectors, only the one that is in the location where the smoke is, is going to go off. The remainder of the house will not go off, because they're not linked together. So, we need to really visit that and see what we could do to change that.
You propose that for new construction or for existing?
That's for existing, see, right now, what I'm finding, when I go into these houses that's being renovated, there's no smoke detectors in there but batteries, old battery operated smoke detectors. So, I'm going in and telling them, say, we got to put smoke detectors in here. So, most folks, most owners want to put just battery operated smoke detectors in, and that's not going to make the house totally safe, without the way that they're linked together.
The question is the cost of wiring.
Well, here's the deal, that's why I was saying, the wireless type, you don't have to wire.
But you have to have a Wi-Fi in your house.
No, sir.
Yeah.
No, sir. These ones that they have now, which is UL listed, you can buy them at any electrical supply house, that you only have to wire up one, or you could go to a plug and, and set it up, buy a plug, and then the rest of them are linked to that particular bridge, like we got here, I put some here at the, uh, city hall. You only wire one, rest of them are wireless, and that way, if one go on, all of them goes off.
But the question is, you have to wire one.
Right, you don't, you don't, you don't necessarily have to wire it. You can tie it to one of the plugs, you don't have to wire, we could.
Oh, okay.
The law, your question in a master electrical.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to explain the cost to the, as existing versus new.
Well, well, the, the problem is, David, is that the old smoke detectors, they're spending money to buy, uh, battery operated smoke detector, which costs anywhere from thirty to maybe forty bucks, the last time I looked, it's some, some might be a little bit less. Uh, but, if you go to get the ones that I'm talking about, that is, is called wireless, I think for four, I think it's only like a hundred bucks, maybe a hundred and twenty bucks, versus you spending maybe a hundred bucks for battery operated smoke detectors, and then you're not still not totally safe like you would be if you got the wireless type. So, we could, we could visit it, and I'll give some accurate numbers, come before the council again with it. But that's all I have, yes, ma'am.
So, you're saying with the wireless smoke detectors.
Yes, ma'am.
It's several all over the house?
Yes, ma'am, the way through the code is, is that you have them in the hallway and all the bedrooms. And we've been putting them also in the dining room. Right.
They're kind of like Bluetooth, they operate kind of like a Bluetooth type system.
So, in homes now, you're saying most people have only two fire detectors in their house?
Yes, ma'am, they're supposed to have them in every bedroom, and in the hallway, you're supposed to. That's the only way to be safe, because if a fire, that's what we're running into, that's what I'm, most of these houses don't have it. And we got to get to that point, that's why, we, we, you notice a lot of the houses are being burned down. And I think one of the reasons is because of this, they don't have the proper smoke detector in there to identify, let them know that there's something going on inside the house. Uh, now, Moses submitted the thing for security, uh, Anderson West, uh, we need to get on the, Anderson, uh, the, uh, thing from, uh, that's.
We need to get, uh, the, the Addison, uh, the, uh, thing for, uh, rest of the children, give the water line, they need it in the gym. Only got a minute, cause he's talking. But we need to add those to the gym and the lawn system.
The water is off?
No, no, no. The water for the garden.
Okay.
And then, the lawn system for the building.
Oh, okay.
Those got to be, uh, put on the gym.
Right.
So, we need to go add the, uh, you got the...
They sent the, um, for as far as with the alarm, they sent a proposal for that. So, it's, they didn't send like a certain amount, so since it was proposal, then that's gonna be considered as like a contract.
Right. So, that's what we got to go off, though. He told us how much they're gonna be putting in the bank account. That's what we gave the utilities, uh...
I'm actually working on the other two proposals, uh, to get, I'm gonna bring it up when...
So, that's a reason, yeah.
Yeah, so I'm working on others.
Okay. I, I also, I got the, uh, quote for the, uh, best of utilities for, for the water tap, couldn't water tap in?
Right.
Uh, for the garden, uh, what they said was, for a three water line, is three thousand eight hundred fifty-four dollars and forty-eight cents. For one inch line, uh, tap, it would be four thousand two hundred thirty-one dollars and twenty-six cents. And for a two inch tap, uh, water line, which would be five thousand eight hundred and fifteen dollars and ninety-four cents.
What do you recommend?
The one at the very beginning, that, that three-quarter one, that's three thousand eight hundred... That's, I mean, that's all we really need.
Yeah.
Yeah. We're big enough.
You don't pay with that?
I'm motioning, I'm gonna make a motion and accept it at first, but he didn't say it.
Sure, absolutely.
So, we need to add it to the...
Yeah, we're adding to the gym, so we don't get started. Because she's gonna start going to new stuff. She didn't think of going to...
Now, under the current budget, that's one of those, uh, administrative appropriations that you made?
Under the old budget, there's some discretion as well, you can find that money from the old budget. So, you gotta look at the old budget and see whether or not you got back three thousand five hundred dollars, or one of those items, something.
Okay. That's how it works, right. So, she's just, she's just pulling for the line, and we don't have to... Y'all agree with the, the amount? She's just pulling for the line, so we'll just, we'll do that, okay?
I'm not motioning, I'm...
You don't need a motion.
Okay.
I just get a consensus of everybody, y'all agree with that amount. And here to come from the already budgeted amount, uh, in the existing budget, all right?
So, who's coming from where specifically?
Uh, she would have to find out, I am the clerk. Okay. But I just wonder about...
Of course, it is, it's already in your budget, right? But you now, you itemize where the money is.
Right.
So, it has to be transferred out of that for this particular person.
Alrighty. Thank, any questions for Moses Hill? Mr. Hill, you hear something else?
No, I'm good.
Okay, alright. Now, it begins in Park of Recreation.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Oh, I have had several companies to come out to give estimates. This is all pertaining to the metal roof, which is leaking. Each time somebody comes out, they find something else. This is where it's leaking, and it's been... So, I have an estimate here. Um, this is to put a seal all the way around the bottom metal part of the gym, clean out the gutters on the metal part, and replace a gutter. And I'm asking for it to be approved, so I can move forward, but it's one thousand nine hundred dollars. And that's to do what again, Don? This is to put a seal... Seal? All the way around the bottom part of the metal roof, where water is pouring into the gym.
Sure.
Replace, uh, excuse me, repair a bullet hole and some other holes that are up there. And clean out the gutters, and replace a missing section of the gutters at the top of the gym.
Alright. That's not a budget, Busted? One thousand nine hundred and nine dollars?
One thousand nine hundred.
Okay. Right. Uh, Michael Lloyd?
Evening.
He's gonna come if y'all have a, a, a approval of the expense, right?
Mm-hmm, right. You'll see it, you'll see it.
He can see it as an expense, right? They call it more like expense.
Yes, and Titan could have gone long for the Addison West building. I was trying to stick with the same cut, the course that we, uh, been using for the library and, uh, car and entire buildings. And it's supposed to came out. I had to probably get one for the weeks out to, uh, get, get a quote, two, the other two quotes, uh, in, uh, eighty, eighty piece for the, uh, service. So, I should know something, hope it's by tomorrow. And, uh, they're, I'm about to wrap up paying at the library, so hopefully, we'll get the library back going for, you know, so... Get the education on. And, um, I did post that, uh, house in Russell's height. So, hopefully, another week or so, we'll be able to cut it and do a home of the...
Can you provide them?
Well, um, the neighbor stated, uh, that people moved out and, uh, whoever get on it now, they're just waiting till their legal process take place, so, uh, he said they'd be back and forth, so I'm waiting on, you know, our time, until we could... But, you know, and I did finish the speed notes around on Delta Place, too. And, uh, I'm actually gonna work on trying to see what we can come up with to get some besides your house, that's for, I haven't forgot.
Okay.
So, I'm gonna get with the county, so hopefully, uh, we'll know something on that. And I'm working on getting quotes and getting those trees cut around the library, too, cause with that brand-new roof, and the way the old branches follow, we're gonna be putting another roof on that thing pretty soon, so... Uh, trying to get, attempt that they cut our trees down at the park for, and, uh, cook them up, so... Should know something on that by the end of the week, I'll...
Any questions for Michael Lloyd? So, what, it's all right. Are you going to report to the council?
Do you, are you still thinking this?
Yeah, is somebody? You're trying, so I tell you.
Yes, ma'am, uh, David, you can just report it, and then we'll get going on you. I'll report.
David, one independent litigation, right? That's the police overtime thing, that we thought, I guess, it was all... But the judge came back and says, "No, you don't have the law, because you gotta do a new computation about how you... How you compute what this guy's worth." So, we're working on trying to find the language that the judge is gonna approve, but we thought it was a done deal. It was a done deal, please, it was all you. But the judge told us, monkey, we're trying to figure out what the word should be. It's, it's called, "Done deal." That's a figure.
Because the plaintiff had agreed to a settlement amount, and the judge said it wasn't a help. I don't never heard it.
I ain't never heard that either, but, uh, that's what I'm saying, and so we gotta go back and try to compute a method.
Yeah.
That's, uh, how it was the judge's taking. But we don't know what that means yet.
You told the plaintiff, "You're being too cheap."
Well, I don't know what the judge's mind said, he is, I don't know what she's doing, so... All the thing we gotta do is come up with something that you think that the judge is gonna listen to. But that's the individual, we have, we have to... The other thing, uh, routine calls I get from the mail, routine calls I get from the client.
Now, also, um, you have an officer that took a leave three days. He took his car home, he's on leave, he took his car home, and he used a gas card, three times, while he's on leave.
A car, someone took a car home while they're on leave?
While they're on leave.
Mm-hmm.
And he used a gas card, three times.
Uh, that's not...
It happened.
That's not acceptable, okay?
It, it happened, we got records of it, records of him on the leave.
Somebody using the car and the car while they're on leave?
Correct.
So, they're not on the clock, technically?
Correct.
Okay. That's, uh...
That's called, that's called disappropriation access, the project.
Okay.
It's called a project.
He don't perceive it.
No, 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 that's not a question.
Chief thought the paper was for the judge to go on, you know, he left with the car, cause like, he gotta check his fleet. So, he hasn't, and he has the car. He knows each individual officer has their own gas, they have their own gas card, which he can check. I have no confidence in how chief doing anything, but that's, that's my, it's my opinion.
Well, now, he's in the two, pressing hand, I've got...
No, you know, he, he, he's not doing what he's supposed to do for his... When you go on leave, you leave your car here.
Yeah.
There's no reason in taking home, and he not working, for the city, another officer could have used that car if their car went down.
I, I do recognize that, but, so, jumping to conclusion right here in all sides of the story. Plus, you're getting into good name and character, that could, that could be detrimental to that person's employment status. So, it's a little more serious and, and depth in that, but I agree, if that is happening, then there should be some oversight.
Yeah, but if that is happening, then you report it to the prosecutor, prosecutor's office, which is gonna be outside of the midfield. Where you, you go to best to make that report. So, that's how I would, I would charge that, you know?
Okay, alright.
May I ask, you have a go to best?
What?
You can, you can. You cannot file a prosecution against your own employee inside the midfield. That's, you have to go outside of the midfield prosecutor.
Yeah.
Prosecutor. You have midfield prosecutor, right?
It was, it was either saying if a council member, member of this administration, has some kind of disturbance at your house, it wouldn't be up to the midfield police to investigate without turn it over to the county. Right, because you can't really investigate yourself.
You gotta, you gotta do it. It doesn't bother that company, it's a business.
Right. But I, I assure you, that would be investigated, now that we make aware of it. Okay, thank you. Uh, anything else?
That's all.
Alright, council members?
Okay, two things. Um, I'm asking you all, make sure you get your budgets into, unless it's this week, if you want to aim. So, please get your budgets in. Um, Mayor, I know we talked about getting an audit done, and, um, I was made aware that you've already signed a contract for an audit. Uh, you didn't bring for us to tell us how much or anything, what's appropriate. Well, normally, we would go down and discuss the amount of money that was gonna pay for an audit, so... You get that contract, you gonna have to, uh, we gonna have to own that contract that you've already signed and appropriated money for.
Okay. Um, yes, in fact, I brought the auditor, introduced it to the council months ago. That was much prior to our election or anything else going on. I thought it was acceptable, except right there, that Eugene Pitch, the...
I understand, yeah.
Principal Associates. Um, if, if you wanna delay the audit, it's your prerogative. However, there is a contract, and work has started. So, officially, there's a contract underway. Uh, other than that, that's it, and the lawsuit, the mere selecting audit.
Well, I don't have a problem with you selecting audit. My problem is that you normally, when we do an audit, you always have brought it in the past before the council, to discuss it with us and let us know what's going on. In this case, you did not, and that was just my concern, because we were unaware that a resolution or nothing had been done, you've already done the process without letting the council know. That was my own concern, because in the past, we've always did, did that.
True.
So, that means we have to get two audits done in one year?
Can it do two in one year?
Yeah, we can do two audits in one year.
I mean...
I'm just saying, if you change over, you're asking about... You're auditing, the audit is about to be done as soon as we change over in November.
You have to hold it one. The problem is, you cannot do in current order for just a year, because based on what you've done audit-wise in prior, you can't start, you put out, have a starting point. So, a starting point is you gotta go back in order to get and go forward. That's, that's why you have to do that. You can't just do one year and call that an audit.
We gotta, we gotta do the audit in five years, so... So, I'm saying, so we, if the retracement is going out, when you're out, you put, a out audit, so maybe you want to do a, a in audit? That would be coming, so we wanna do an audit to see exactly where, where we at. So, we wanna bring in our audit team to look at, at what was going on.
Then you have two people doing the same work.
Right.
Well, that's what y'all are gonna say, that's the mind that way, that's the...
All the way you know what's being done, right? Cause people leave, people leaving, so...
That's what I've caused, you're doing an audit now?
Yeah, this, this audit, this audit school systems around here, City of Vesava, the CPA...
We can afford those.
These are reputable, per, you leave, okay?
Awesome.
And the other problem you had, too, is that we've had five courts in five years, which really makes, uh, it's very difficult to get an audit to come in and audit us, because everybody have a way of doing it, everybody have a different way of coding. Uh, system's gonna have to unravel, but, you know, it's your prerogative, it's your call. And the contract has already been signed, so I can't, I ring the bell.
Well, we don't have to table it.
I wanna cancel the contract and go right ahead.
Yeah, we don't wanna table it till we get some more, uh, opinion from...
And then the table, and then the table.
We don't pause it till we get opinion from someone else.
Okay. Depending legal action with the audit.
I'm good.
That's my part. Alright, so, I'll double up, that's what happens there. Alright, any other questions? Alright, thank you, Councilman Weller.
Um, I wanna give a shout-out to the parade organizers. I think everything kinda went along smoothly after we got the police there, so I just wanna give a shout-out to the parade organizers. And during the month of November, every Wednesday during the month of November, from nine o'clock to eleven o'clock, we'll have a senior citizens camper day at the school in the Cosmetology Department. If you get there at twenty-nine o'clock and eleven o'clock, we'll have a camper day where you can get basic needs done, like the basic manicure, or you can get a basic style. And the basic style will be like a flat iron, straw, roll of six, long as it's not braids or anything that, uh, takes them a whole time or that's handy. So, that's every Wednesday during the month of November from nine until eleven. And on November eighth, that's the first Saturday in November, I am organizing a neighborhood cleanup. And, uh, location will be at Faith Church in the parking lot next to Faith Church. So, I've already got about fifteen to twenty students committed to come and clean up today. But, you know, we're gonna try to at least do eight to ten walkings. And that's all that there is.
Alright, thank you, Councilor Johnson.
Yes, I would like to give, uh, a little update on the library. They, uh, as Mike stated, they are, they are paying, they also have purchased, uh, new furniture. Um, the new floor is just, uh, they're wanting to change the whole outside of the building. The rails are gonna be changed, they got flowers, uh, that they're gonna be planted, and the grain opening will be this year. So, it's, it's looking, it's looking a whole lot better. It's, it's very, it's very pretty on the inside, like that. So, the boys are doing their job by picking their paint colors, and it's just exciting to see that we have made so much progress. And I also wanted to remind everybody of the Neighborhood Association of Beautification Village. Uh, the Neighborhood Association is planning on giving, uh, um, slack, uh, put the beautifications hide in the doors for Christmas. So, I would like to encourage everyone to decorate the houses, just in a way of us trying to feel inspired, that we love you guys, and we want our city to look great, so, uh, just a way for us to try and pursue or get everybody interested in decorating their home. You'll be surprised how many streets I've passed, though, it's no lights, nothing, not even porch, porch light. So, we're just trying to encourage you guys to decorate for this holiday season. And thank you, that's all I have to say.
Alright, thank you. Alright, next item on the bill, Jenny, what's your name?
Mayor.
Yes, Don?
Sorry. Um, got to meet you then. October the twenty-third will be our Fall Festival at the Community Center from six to eight. Uh, we do new volunteers to work the games and bring a bag of candy.
Alright, thank you. Hold the beat to the public, limit your comments to three minutes. Uh, we have Ricky Clemmons, six hundred questions?
I think this is God in love. I think this is God in love.
There you go, number one, one need applied, six oh four Eighth Street.
Please, Councilor. My question to the Council, why is my tax bill so high this year? Almost three hundred dollars, seven dollars and something. Seven dollars and some cent change, and being three hundred dollars, it wasn't like that last year. I'm on a fixin' car, and wasn't ever bolted on.
No, ma'am, we don't, we don't...
What you do, tell me something.
Sales property tax value. Uh, I bet somebody in here worked at a tax office, probably has been explaining that, but, uh, if the vote of equalization determines the, uh, profit value of your, the profit, and it, it's usually based on what other houses are... price of sold in, in around the neighborhood, so that's how the adjustments are made, you have to make it.
I think that's what you can't...
Yeah, wrong place. Yes, Kelly, yes.
I do want to know, I'm gonna fix this car.
I know, uh, Mayor Paul Taylor, one, Harry Street.
Good evening. Uh, I'm back again, back to cameras. The chief there's supposed to be getting listed, get to this man, um, that's on, cameras on my house and other, uh, people in midfield, thank you, Mike, for the update on the speed bumps. In the house, Charles Davis' house, Charles Davis ain't been over there to that house, and I don't know when. And all them trees and stuff, and, and he don't come over there, so, something need to be did, done about his house. Hello, anybody?
The last time I went over there, you know, he smarted off with me, so, I mean, that might be true.
I ain't talking about this, this, Marv, I ain't talking about him, I'm talking about Charles Davis, that one of these two, okay? Okay, alright, well, he ain't been in, he ain't been over there, and all that stuff in there that's left from his construction, and all them bushes and stuff around there. Trees growing over the house.
We're gonna do everything we can to the best of the law.
Alright.
Everything we can to the best of the law.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Alright, we have Run, Run Deal Three, three forty-one Midwood.
How's it, good evening, everybody?
Good evening.
Um, we had an incident this, uh, Saturday. Uh, we had a loved one next door to us, who we couldn't get in touch with, and we had to call, uh, Midfield Police Department, because I had their camera short. But, uh, Officer Cleveland came, and he went far beyond what was required of him, and I wanted to recognize him for his help, and go in and do what he did. And so it did raise a question, as far as our popular, uh, pitch market policy. We couldn't, he couldn't enter the home to find out, and there were certain things that he had to look for in order to make entry. Uh, we found her on the floor, passed out, she was in diabetic coma. And it was a simple fact that if we were to go strictly by the books where to speak, she wouldn't be with us today. So I was hoping that we could find out what Midfield's policy is, and if there's anything that we could do, or who we can, or a different, or we can go in with a fire department, or, you know, y'all can make welfare checks easier, that concern, so that when, you know, these situations come and I see the, our loved ones, you know, um, we just sitting around, twiddling our thumbs, kind of thing.
Oh, yes, sir, uh, from my experience, when we'll call you to a welfare check, uh, fire department, we can't just enter the home, we'll get the police started, and when they get there, it's only like the death of night, and we, we think that somebody's in there, we will make entry. We've seen the police, and I'm, I'm not sure what their policy is, but that's how we, you know, we just don't make entry without focus, in ground for on the scene. So everything else, I'll, I'll...
So, um, yeah, so, by like fourth amendment, we can't just go in your house, um, but in that particular situation, you're adamant, we knew, so we got creative, and we're ready to get in the house, and it was good that we did, so, I'm gonna talk to Chief about that policy and give what you think, and see what the world can do, so we don't give any circumstances, right, get a situation.
Well, the question is, there's only so much information, because the information is, we know somebody's been there, then they can break the door down for a welfare check, but if they don't have that kind of information, then they, they don't have any authority to be in that, in that situation.
Someone by their own, I mean, for y'all's sake.
I know, I mean, that's, that's what it is, I mean, you have to have enough information that you can, from that side, because it's one type of family. In order to make entry, there has to be a split, the amount of information to say, we gonna break the door. So if you don't have that information, that's what you do.
If nobody, no one, no one is home, then we made an unnecessary entry, didn't sit as loud, for that, so that's how it is.
But when you know somebody's home?
Well, how do they know that?
I mean, we don't want to take out them out there, put them on that team.
Then, then they made that, didn't they? How did they? They made it?
Yeah, we found you, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's what they got in there, based on their safety data.
So she survived?
Uh, she's in MICU, um, uh, PKA, uh, yeah, so, she's, yeah, she went and made though, if they had gotten her.
Oh, Jesus.
Alright. Thank you, so it was three percent of the answer?
It's, it's, like, as they got, it's, 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 like, the time, his face saw here, from calling dispatch and, you know, seconds, we were talking seconds as far as her life.
And the response time, Chief?
It was good response time.
Huh?
It was, it was a good response time.
Good response time.
Yes, yes, sir, but we have to make sure that we have extenuating circumstances, that someone is home, car in the yard, or, uh, somebody can contact, or family, or representative, or somebody like that, we just can't go busting someone's house down, busting someone's door down, if nobody's there, then we got another situation. Don't stay where you come from, but this is, where you from.
But if it was my, I would just work in, and I would worry about, you know, because me, I just work in, and I counsel here, maybe if it was a mistake.
That's not you, really.
Yeah, you, 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 you. But no, they in it.
Right. Thank you, sir, we have Vivian Wallop, five hundred, La Boy Street.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I, I've passed by several houses coming here today, and it's so many cars in these yards that's broken down, and I thought it was an ordinance, that your car has to have a tag on it, and I put it in the yard or something. That one house had ten cars, from the front door, all wrapped around the back door, not, hadn't worked in years. Is there anything that the city could do about it? I know a long time ago, they used to come out, police used to come out and, and check to see if these cars had tags, and if they didn't, they'd ticket them, or put a sticker on them, or they would tow them away. This is on Short Street, the last house on Short Street.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
I moved mine. But I've got some other problems that I'm gonna need probably the new mayor to help me out with, about getting a little building up there like I'm discussing what he wants to perform, right, so I could get them stored in there and make them look, uh, better than what we had.
Okay.
I, I'll bring it, I'll get, do you advise me to get Mr. Moses over here to...
Yeah.
Uh, to, we'll get things started and make, I'll show him what I wanna do, and then, uh, what, is that what you recommend?
Uh, yes, sir, I'm pundit ball.
I mean, uh, I mean, you don't, you don't have nothing else to do. I see you ain't doing nothing around here.
Alright, we move to next half, I see we got a news reporter, two eight seven oh five Golden Crest Drive, I believe with Golden Crest Drive, I got three M T V equipment up on Golden Crest Drive, so, yes, sir.
Yeah, um, Mayor Richardson and, um, Mayor Lake Adams, I contacted both of you about a story we're working about, about red light cameras. Both of you have denied our request for an interview, so, before we hear the story, I wanna give anyone on the council another chance to answer some questions CBS has about concerns people in midfield have raised about the red light cameras. We'd like to know how many tickets these cameras are giving out, how much of the city's revenue comes from red light cameras, and just give the city a chance to talk about why these cameras help things like traffic safety and stopping traffic violations. Again, I've, I've spoken to both of you multiple times about this, and you've denied our request, so we're gonna make a public request here for either of you or anyone from the city to give us an interview to talk about these cameras.
We managed, we put that in writing, your request for, information.
We have. Yeah, we, we have, and we put it in last week, and then this morning I got a new form, so we've already submitted those requests.
And they will follow you, too.
They have not.
I said they will not follow your request.
Right. Red light cameras, nothing new, it's been in place for dozens of years now, so, what's the news?
Some community members have raised concerns to us, so we'd like to sit down and talk with you.
Thank you, uh, I decline the interview, thank you, sir. Go, yes, go ahead.
Slow down.
Okay, alright, well, no one has yet been signed up yet, they're motion to adjourn.
Well, they're going to jail for tonight, that's how we gonna be, Midfield City Council is now over.